For 116 years, one partisan association has held a monopoly over school boards. And school board members are getting fed up. The insufficient training that they get only prepares them to represent their division and not their constituents. It is all too focused on school board limitations and red tape. So that is why today we are talking about Virginia's new school board member alliance, the SBMA. The SBMA is a nonpartisan organization that empowers and resources school board members to be great servants of their community. Join me in welcoming SBMA Board Chairman Sherri Story and Cheryl Faciani, SBMA's director. Ladies, welcome to the State of Education Podcast.
Thank you. It's great to be here.
It's a delight to have you. So these guests today are individuals who are highly educated. They have extensive experience in education themselves as well as serving on school boards. And they are driven by a love for our children and our country and to help empower school board members to really be great leaders and to give great oversight in their work. So Sherri, why don't we start off with you and let's just jump into a few things and I'm going to come back to you Cheryl if you don't mind.
That sounds good.
All right. So Sherri, tell us a little bit more about yourself personally and professionally.
Well, I'm originally from the Midwest. My home was in Wisconsin for many, many years. And I had my first teaching jobs in Wisconsin and I also lived in Michigan for quite a while while raising my two children. And then came to Virginia in 1999. So I'm a transplant, I guess, but now this feels like home. I have two children and four grandchildren and they live in Northern Virginia. So we're all in the same state and I feel privileged for that. We're nice and close.
Where are you in Virginia? What part of Virginia do you live in?
Yeah, I live in Suffolk, Virginia right now. And I'm hoping to transplant myself closer to my grandkids, which is will be up around Fairfax soon. Okay. I've had 22 years of teaching experience in the field of high school biology. And I love teaching. I did it for 10 years in Wisconsin and then took a break and came when I came here to Virginia. Then I taught for 12 years at Kings Park High School and the Suffolk City Public Schools.
That's very interesting. You probably don't know this, but one of my favorite subjects in high school was biology. In fact, I wanted to be a veterinary doctor.
Awesome.
Anyway, ended up shifting as I grew older and opportunities came and kind of went a whole different direction. But loved science and particularly biology. So, okay, as a teacher in that experience, what in the world got you interested in running for and serving on school boards?
Well, I think as a teacher here in Virginia, I was always, could not understand how the sciences were so underfunded. Huge, huge budgets, million dollar budgets. And yet the finances were never clear to me. They were not transparent. It seemed like as a teacher, I was constantly asking why the sciences were so underfunded. I talked in front of the board several times lamenting about the lack of funding for science and for lab. And that really got me interested in why school boards were so non-transparent. It seemed like they were hiding all the time, trying to come up with word salad sentences and not really answering your question. And so I thought that was a disservice, especially to the sciences, which is my passion. I think, you know, one of the schools was budgeted at seven cents per student. And at seven cents per student, you cannot do science. You're just doing bookwork.
You can't even buy a pencil for seven cents.
So that's what really got me interested then in becoming part of the board is to try to write some of that funding issues. And then also to be more transparent, I saw a board that walked in and never didn't have any discussion. And it just didn't seem like it represented the people, especially me as a constituent. So I got interested in running for school board.
So it sounds to me like you attended a few school board meetings, saw the folk come in salute and say, yes, sir, yes, ma'am. Sign off and go home.
That was it.
Far too often happens. So you got on board on the school board. You ran, you got elected. And our focus is going to really shift toward the SBMA. But could you tell us a story from your experience on school board that may be a real catalyst or a window into why SBMA? What was something that happened to you that said, we got to fix a problem here?
There's a lot of stories I could tell you, but most importantly, I think that once I started asking questions as a school board member, wanting to know more, within two, three months of asking questions, I was, I was a target. And that was just not quote allowed. And then I wondered, where is this coming from? Why couldn't a school board member receive data? Why couldn't they receive things I asked for? I was constantly denied. Why are we talking about things in closed session that I think the public and constituents would want to know? Why weren't we doing that out front? Why were we doing that behind the scenes? And so those are the kind of obstacles I ran into. And I really felt the most important being transparency is that truly the constituents were not hearing the business of the school board. There were so many things going on by phone calls and then in closed session. And so it was one of the things that then I felt necessary to take my school board to court. And I used the FOIA law to try to open things up. And so that's where I really got engaged in transparency and winning several of those. The school board today in Suffolk is operating under a lot more transparency than they certainly were four years ago when I came on the board.
You know, it's amazing what a little bit of pushback will do properly done. And it just helps people understand that, you know, there's a better way of doing business. And so thank you for sharing that part of your story. Let me switch over now to Cheryl just for a few minutes. So Cheryl, talk to us a little bit. Talk to our audience. Tell us a little more about yourself personally and professionally.
Sure. So I grew up in New Jersey. If you can hear the accent. I've been living in Roanoke for over 20 years, but I grew up in a very tight knit Italian family. Lots of Sunday dinners together, wonderful parents. And my parents really believed in the importance of education. And that's because really mostly from my mother who did not have a college education. And I think where you come from and what you become really gels together. And for me, what shaped me was my grandfather. At a very young age, both my grandparents came to the United States for the American dream from Italy. They immigrated through Ellis Island when they were just 10 years old. They didn't speak a lick of English. They didn't have two nickels to rub together, as my grandfather would say. And so he was just seeking a better life and he didn't have an education. So at the age of 17, he actually enlisted in the army and was a 101st Airborne Division Paratrooper. So he was there on D-Day and it was because of him and his bravery that, you know, I'm here today, right? So growing up, we heard those stories of how important education was, how important patriotism was, how important your love of country. And it really instilled in me this deep love of the United States of America and the freedoms. So really, he just, I don't want to say he was a patriarch of the family, but he certainly was a guiding light in my life. And anyway, make no mistake, the day that I was sworn into office was his birthday. So I think that was a sign from God that he had been watching over me throughout my entire campaign. So I decided to run actually almost because of him. There are a lot of other things that were taking place in the world. The pandemic was at the forefront. Our children were on lockdown. They weren't going to schools. The atrocities I thought that were taking place, the lack of respect for parents and their, them as decision makers really pushed me in the direction of saying, listen, if I don't, if I don't stand up, who's going to stand up? If I don't do this, who is? So I ended up running and obviously I won and it was an excellent election, but it was very contested and it was hot. But with regards to myself personally, I am a speech language pathologist. I'm now retired. I worked for many years, not in the schools, so I don't have a school background, but I have a pediatric background. I worked in hospitals, acute care, subacute care, skilled medical facilities, had a private practice. And I always wanted to become a speech pathologist because my brother had a stutterer. And I saw the impact that she made on the life of him and his family. And for me, she was just, you know, a hero because she was able to teach him how to speak without a stutter. So that sounds a little silly, but there's little people in your life, I think, that come into play. And this woman really had an impact on me. So I worked for many years in hospitals and my husband's job brought us to Roanoke about 20 years ago. We could have lived anywhere. We could have lived in, gosh, Atlanta, North Carolina, California, but we picked Virginia because of its schools. That was our number one priority. What were the schools like? Where were you going? I was a product of a private school, all girls, Catholic education. And I just thought I really liked my children to go to a public school. And the public education system in Virginia has always been well known to be outstanding. So that, you know, that's why we settled here was for the schools, which, you know, and here we are. 20 years later, our scores are not that great. You know, Youngkin put out that great report about how much we're failing and has the literacy act. But it's really kind of fascinating. I think there was a shift. I don't think Virginia has the best school systems right now, but I think we're on the up and up and we're creating a pathway for success.
So how long have you been on the school board?
So just a year. Actually, how that all transpired was I, once the kids were locked out of the schools, I called the person who was in my seat and I said, Jason, we need to get our kids in schools. And oddly enough, his son was my son's best friend. So I ran against my son's dad's best friend. And everybody said, oh my gosh, I can't believe you're going to run against him. Aren't your kids best friends? And I said, well, he's not doing his job. I could do better. So I had a meeting at my house. I called a couple of the delegates. I said, please come on over. We're going to have some parents come together and we got to figure out a way to get our kids back in school. And that night, as I was saying goodbye to everybody and they were headed out the door, a friend of mine who served as the chairman for the Republican Committee, he pulled me aside. He said, you know, you really need to run for school board. And I looked at him, I saw you're joking. And he said, no, you really need to run. His seat is up in a year. You need to take it. And I said, I don't think I want to do that. And then it just got worse and worse and worse. Our kids weren't in school. I mean, they were, I was afraid our kids were going to be forced to take the vaccines. I've got four children. Three of my four have an autoimmune disease, type one diabetes. And I did not want them to have to put something in their body. Now, we have Youngkin and everything's, you know, hunky dory, right? Right now, I feel like. But there was a chance, a very, you know, Youngkin won by what, 2%? So there was a chance that he wasn't going to win. And I knew that I needed to serve on the school board to protect my kids and make sure they stayed in school.
Interesting. Well, thank you for sharing that with us, Cheryl. Let's jump into the bigger topic here. And so I know particularly Sherri, you and I have talked to each other numerous times the last couple of years. And I remember one particular conversation, I believe I was down in Florida. I was going to a conference down there and we had played a little phone tag and I was in a Walmart. And we had a long conversation around a lot of things that were going on in education about then and brainstormed about a bunch of stuff. But this has been a process that's been happening for a while. Just, you know, more and more school board members really frustrated with their roles. And really, in many times, really a sense that the school board association that their boards are members of was sometimes heavy handed, sometimes, you know, felt manipulated by lawyers and always told what you couldn't do instead of what you could do. And so it's just been a long process here, kind of fomenting. But talk to our audience a little bit about your own personal journey and what caused you to finally say, you know what, this is the right thing to do and start pulling some people together to get it done. And we'll talk some about that process, but tell that story.
Well, as soon as I got on, we are all required by law to take some high quality professional development and training. And I think that was really good. And I certainly took a lot of it. I think this, even this past, my last year on the board, got some award for attending a lot of the training. So in attending those trainings, I was frustrated by what always being told it was not my lane, what I could not do. And I felt if it was really that one-sided, there was really no reason to have a school board. If everything that was being done at the school level was in the hands of the superintendent, once you hired him and the administration, then I really didn't know why we were having a meeting every month. Was it just to come and for the superintendent to show off arts things and athletic things? But we never seemed to do business of the school division. So I started reading the law, got my hands on a school law book and started reading everywhere and outlining everywhere that it said, the local school district shall, I started highlighting that. And I said, oh my gosh, we have a really important role. We need to be doing what we have been elected to do. You know, the legislature in Virginia has made really good code statutes, statutes. They have taken a lot of consideration of how to make and have a good school district at the local level. But if you don't follow any of those, then that's on us. That's not on them. It's on us. And so so many I would bring up and I would ask the question, it says, we are to evaluate every year annually the professional development of our teachers. And my school board didn't care. They still would not allow any, any critique, not even any information on it. And so it just frustrated me that there was no one advocating for individual school board members who really wanted to follow the law and who really wanted to be very good transparent representatives of their constituents. And I wanted to be accountable to my constituents. I felt that once I got elected, I spoke for them. I didn't speak for the superintendent. I didn't speak for all the other school board members. We are a corporate body. And I thoroughly understood that one person could not autonomously do anything. However, I didn't lose my voice and I didn't lose my ability to speak for my constituents. At least I didn't think I did.
So Sherri, if I could just interrupt there for just a second, I mean, I've talked to so many school board members here in Virginia and across the country. People who want to get involved, people who really want to know what's going on in their school districts and in their local schools. They want to engage with parents. They want to engage with teachers. They want to know, look, what do you need? How can we help? You know, what are the challenges you face every day? You know, what makes you love to come to work and what makes you hate to come to work and these kinds of things? But you can't get that unless you are interactive and engaged at that level. And so many school board members were saying, you know, we were always told, you're not supposed to show up. You're not supposed to go and engage. All you are is a policy body. And you only have any real influence or any authority when you are in session as a group, which we understand. That's, you have to be in session as a group when you are doing the deliberation and the work. But in order to do that job well, you have to be well informed. And that kind of activity is part of being well informed. Is that something that you experienced and is that something you find very common?
Absolutely. I was, I mean, when I wanted to engage with teachers, I was told I can't do that. That was the superintendent's lane. And I'm like, wait a minute, how do I have oversight of what's going on? If I'm forbidden to talk to a teacher who actually is contracted by the school board? That's who they're contracted with. So I, as their literally employer, how can you forbid me from talking to them? And yet it was a constant fight to go and look at the grounds, to check out the buildings and to see, you know, when teachers would complain about mold and getting sick, you know, to go and observe that was an absolute no, no. I mean, there has been such tight control and they've been taught that by a group that I did not think really represented what the law says. One of the duties is I am to go and visit if, at any time that I feel in need. School board members should be going into their schools and see what's going on physically and what's going on with their staff if there's problems. And I think that there has been training that has been done to handcuff school board members. And when a new school board member comes on, they're told, literally, I was told repeatedly, you're a bad school board member. Do not ask these questions. You're being bad. How can you be bad for asking questions? The other thing is just go ask the superintendent privately. He'll give you those answers, but don't bring them up in a public meeting. I thought we are a public school system. This is a public meeting. What do you mean go privately ask the superintendent? This should be open and above board to be discussed. And if it can't be discussed openly and above board, then we're not public. If that's how school board members are trained to do things privately behind the board, then I think we all ought to go and be part of a private school, school board. But that's not public education. And I didn't think I was elected to do that. So that's certainly got the balls rolling. I thought, where is this kind of training coming from? That keeps education so private and so closed down to the public that school board members are told and given this inference that we can't talk at a school board meeting? To me, that's not public education. That's not democracy. That's not a republic. We're elected. We should be talking and discussing and having conversations back and forth on our board. Our school board still doesn't have conversations. I don't, I think now we've got some new members that have been elected and it'll work that way. But conversation, intellectual discussion between members is very important because we have topics that need discussing.
So there's another factor here is that it seems like the school board association, you know, their, their policy is simply that they only deal with a full board and their, their decisions. They, that's kind of the extent of where they're going to go with a school board. And while we understand that school boards have to make collective decisions, that school board is made up of a variety of people, each one representing a distinct constituency of that community. And so many school board members and I believe many people in the community, when they're having issues with their schools and they can't get certain things to happen, whether it's something that should happen or not, it's not the question. It boils down to, look, you are my representative. I want to talk to you about what my interests or my concern. And I want you to do something about it. And so when that is going on and that whole, kind of in a sense, it's like we, you know, there's so much stuff that's been out here in Virginia about, well, not just in Virginia, but on a nationwide level about the parents being the terrorists and, you know, and all of those kinds of things. Many of us believe that parents need to be a very integral part of what is going on in the schools. And they need to be able to have open access to their school board members. And their school board members should be able to represent those parents and the broader community directly, not only within the board, but in association outside and beyond that board structure. And talk to us about that a little bit.
Well, I think the, the teaching, the instruction, and Cheryl can, she's newer on the board. And so what she has received is you're to funnel every single question to the superintendent. But they're my constituents. Why would I do that? Why would I not speak with them? I had to go out and campaign. I let them know what I was campaigning on. But then I'm never to speak to them again. Why would I, that makes no sense to me. It makes no sense to me that every single vote should be unanimous. In fact, there is a norm that was written in our school board that said, you can disagree behind the scenes, but when you go out front, you're expected to vote whatever the majority is going to vote. Who does that? Who, what elected body in our republic moves by motion and unanimous every single vote? Then I'm not representing my constituents. And yet, when I did not vote with the majority, the bullying that goes on with individual school board members is quite horrendous. I mean, I can't tell you how many times I was called a racist because I wouldn't vote with the majority. What does that have to do with anything? We're elected to represent people and we must represent them. And that's what our voice is meant to do, in my opinion.
Cheryl, you want to weigh in on this?
Yeah. So when I was first selected and, you know, you go through all the training, it quickly became clear to me that I was supposed to rubber stamp. There was just, let's get along to go along and let's do what they say. And I was too, was asking lots of questions. And my board itself, four out of five are conservatives, I'd say. So we do have a majority, but even that being so, the board that I came onto was very misinformed, I would say. They, they would just say, oh, you know, well, he knows what he's doing. Why would we even question it? That's what they want. So let's just do it. And I'd say, well, now hold on a second here. You know, that's not, that's not our job. Our job is to be the decision maker. Why are we allowing the superintendent to be the decision maker? So again, it went back to the, you know, this is what you can't do. And I wanted to, well, know what can I do? Let's be proactive instead of being reactive. And it all came to a head for me and it was like the kind of the lights just went off. When we were sitting in a meeting with our school board attorney, who is the chief lobbyist for the VSBA. And this is in the height of the masking and we were not to let our children go to school without masks. I mean, God forbid, they got sick and the teachers got sick. The whole world was going to come to an end. And, you know, in my county, we, we were still going to school partial, partial days, cleaning on Wednesday for some reason. Kids, you know, that were sitting next to each other to eat a sandwich in the classroom because they didn't want to go to the cafeteria. But then when they would go somewhere else, they had to be on opposite ends of the table, six feet apart. I mean, it was just, it was ludicrous. It was so insane. So we're sitting in a meeting and I said, you know, I'd like to understand what school districts, which divisions you represent. And out of those divisions, how many are in masks still? And our school board attorney represented over 30% of the state of Virginia's school divisions. And I thought, you represent how many? We have 132, 133 divisions and you represent over a third? And her response was, every single one is still in masks. And I thought, wow, that's really interesting. So can you tell me the other schools that aren't masking, or at least have a choice? Who's representing that? I don't know. Are they in masks? No. So it became very clear to me that there was an agenda. And this was coming down from the teacher unions, the teachers' unions and from the Merrick Garland's of the world that said, you cannot do this and you must comply. And then our attorney, who is also the chief lobbyist for the VSBA, I felt like she had an agenda. So that being said, I just stopped and questioned it and said, now hold the phone. What are we doing here? Are we following what you want to do? What are we doing here? Are we following what you want to do or are we following what we want to do? We as a board know we have the power to do this. Why are we listening to this one person? Why are we letting her influence us? And what it came down to was fear. They ruled with fear. You will get sued. You will get sued. You will get sued. And you tell a bunch of school board members, they're gonna get sued. Oh, I don't wanna, I don't wanna get sued. I don't wanna get, and I kept on thinking, you're not gonna get sued. We're not gonna get sued. This is ridiculous. And anyway, I, I feel like I became the troublemaker, our school board, because I really started to question. But the good news is the other folks started to wake up. And they said, gosh, you know, you're right, you're right. And, and they started to pay attention to some of these positions that the V S B A has. And, and my, my thought all along was, why are we hiring somebody to be our attorney? When I know the ideals that they represent? If, if this person can be completely unbiased, that's great. But I didn't have faith, given her track record, in which I just spoke about, that she could truly be unbiased. Cause not one of the districts that she represented were out of masks. And honestly, the whole reason why I started to get involved with this organization, SBMA, was I was searching for a person to give us their honest opinion without being jaded to somebody who could just be our attorney without an agenda. And in that search, I came across different folks. And then I started to say to myself, you know, look, I was elected. My constituents put me here to do certain things. Where are the school board members that think like I do? Where are the school board members that are like minded? Where are the school board members? So I can ask, pick up the phone and ask them for advice and ask them, how did you get here? Cause my school board members, they're all, they're, they're all complying. They're all stepping in line. And so it really was by the grace of God, I feel, that this all came together. Through this alliance, we've created a group of folks who do think alike, who do want the same things, who feel like we're not being heard, we're not being represented and we're told to step in line. And together we can galvanize and get things accomplished by leaning on each other and asking questions. Saying, hey, how did you, what's your policy? What did you write? What did you do? And you know, you shouldn't always have to rework the wheel. And when you can borrow ideas and share thoughts or experiences, I mean, even today, we had somebody on a meet, in a, on a phone call, who said, well, listen, this is going on in my school division. How would you guys handle this? And it was just great to offer that support. We haven't had that. And I don't even think the V F B A offered that, so.
Yeah. Well, the, I, I've been watching this. I've been seeing what's going on. I've come to, you know, we've had some things that we've done together. And, you know, it's interesting to see, I believe there are many school board members that are hungry for something different. They really care about their schools. They really care about their constituents. But like, like you said, they're, they're driven too much by fear. Or sometimes they're driven because of a lack of knowledge. They just don't know. And because they don't know and they're not confident in what is really factual and what really their authority is or really, you know, what best practice would be. So they just go along with kind of however it's been happening. And that precedent takes place over what could be.